Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to start off by welcoming you gentlemen for coming out this afternoon. We're going to now start, conduct our panel interview for Veterans and Politics International for Clark County Commission District D. I want to thank you guys very much. I know Saturdays typically we got a lot of other stuff going on right now, but typically Saturdays are campaigning days. So, we do understand that and we appreciate your time very much. How this overall thing is going to work is that we'll start off by giving each one of you gentlemen two minutes to introduce yourself, give a brief background about yourself just so the viewers and listeners and panel members alike get to know you a little bit. And when the panel member asks their first question, then the panel member will do the same. We'll give our name, a little background about us. As far as timeframe goes, just to make sure we do stay on time, everybody will get one minute and 15 seconds to answer the question. And then at that time, when my stopwatch goes off, I'm not going to cut anybody off in the middle of a sentence, but I would ask you to keep it to 15 seconds after that to wrap up if you guys don't mind. Okay, so I guess which one of you gentlemen want to start with introductions first?
I think I'm spaced far enough away from everybody else to do this.
Can you do me a favor? Can you hold the mic kind of like I am? So, we can hear you.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Okay, yeah, my name is Councilman Isaac Barone. I'm currently the elected leader, the councilman for Ward One since 2013 in the city of North Las Vegas. I'm a 25-year teacher. That's actually my primary job, but again, since 2013, I've been the first Latino elected to the city of North Las Vegas. I sit on several regional boards. Right now, I'm also on the Regional Transportation Commission, but I've been part of the Southern Nevada Planning Commission and also the Water Board. Why am I running for Commission D? I think Commission D is actually experiencing still many of the same things, many of the same issues that North Las Vegas was in 2013 when I ran for and was elected there. Of course, District D at that time, along with the rest of the city of North Las Vegas, was actually in a financial implosion, kind of like what we're doing right now. No city came back as far, when we're talking about a city that was literally on the brink of a financial disaster here, no city in the country has come back the way the city of North Las Vegas did, by putting together a solid policy with a lot of hard work and a lot of creativity. And quite frankly, I think that's what the rest of District D needs, someone who can bring in a new way of thinking and really a whole different way to shape government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Washington. Thank you guys for this opportunity. A little bit about my background, I've been here for 65 years in the city of Las Vegas, a country boy, born down in Louisiana. I worked 33 years for Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, the last six years as fire chief. I've been an activist most of my adult life. As such, I've been on United Way Board of Directors, YMCA Board of Directors, as well as a number of other community organizations and committees such as Metro's Multicultural Community Board. I am running because I've been asked to by folks. I've been retired 12 years. I ran for county commission way back in 1991. And one of the reasons they said that I wouldn't win, they thought I was the best guy with integrity, the ability to do the job, but I wouldn't raise the money as a non-elected official, which turned out to be the case. But I am running once again because I have the integrity. I've also been a businessman. I was with a group called New Ventures Capital Development Company where we had a portfolio of several million dollars and we did over $900 million in loans to various organizations and businesses throughout this community. So, I would appreciate the opportunity to serve better. In fact, as a member of the American Legion, I also co-host a radio program. In the American Legion Post 10, we're working on veterans housing over in West Las Vegas. Once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And Mr. Stanley Washington?
Thank you. Mr. Washington? Thank you. Unlike Mr. Washington here, I have not been here for 65 years. I've only been here for 28, but Mr. Washington was one of the first people I met when I was brought to this state shackled by the Bureau of Prisons. I did 16 months at Nellis Federal Prison and Dave, being the community person that he is, was up there with students at the prison. Didn't know him then, when I got out, I knew him afterwards. But who I did go ahead and outreach, when I did my 16 months up there, I recognized right away what was missing in Clark County District D. And I aspired to go ahead and stay here for 28 years because of Frank Hawkins, the first Black Hawk, first Black city councilman of Las Vegas, who inspired me to be here, to come help him do what he's been doing and what I will continue to go ahead and do since I basically got here, which has been a veteran's advocate, an advocate for the underserved. So, not only am I a veteran's advocate, I'm a veteran's advocate for the second, excuse me, for the second chance offenders, being an ex-offender, as you know, the state of Nevada in July of 19, excuse me, of last year allowed ex-felons to go ahead and vote. There's 89,000 of ex-felons in Nevada who are now able to go ahead and participate in the political process. I've recently formed a political action committee, Cal- California-Nevada Veterans Issues 2020. There are five pillar issues that we will be addressing as we move forward. Obviously, the first will be to go ahead and register up as many of the 89,000 as possible. We are now in the game. As far as my background here in Nevada, my 28 years, most people already know what I do. I haven't sat on any formal boards. That's all I did was from day one, when I got out, the second day I got out of prison, I went over to the NAACP office, donated $250 to Reverend Scott with Senator Neal witnessing, and I've been at work ever since, unstoppable. Mr. Sanson knows that anybody in the state who knows anything about anything knows where I stand in terms of advocacy for the underserved. This is going to be a very interesting election and I'm really not a politician.
Okay, Mr. Washington, thank you. Thank you for the introduction. So, just to introduce myself a little bit, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jim Jonas. I host Veterans and Politics International Talk Show, been friends, business partner, and worked alongside Steve Sanson for a number of years and I'm very proud to say that. I'm going to ask two questions. The first question, it actually is the same question, but I want, if you would, because you're both Mr. Washington, if, I'll start and have David answer this question first and then Stanley, if you would like to follow up as well. So, the specific question is, I am aware of both of you gentlemen, I've met Stanley before, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you till today, David. But one thing is, I do commend both of you guys. I really think that it is important to be community activists, be involved in the community. However, when you go from being a community activist and now you hold a public office, those two are different roles. How do you transform from being an activist to now a public official? David, if you would like to start, please.
Well, certainly, I don't think you can go into an office without reviewing what their role and responsibility is. That would be some of the things that I would do initially. And beyond that, certainly, there will be people coming at you from some of the various groups that you participated in, but you've got to look at the law and make decisions based upon what you believe is good for the community, because you still got to interact. So, the activism to me is important. I believe in going out and interacting with people and I believe I would be the voice of the people. And from that, I mean that certainly there's things that various communities will need. I'm talking about neighborhoods within District D. All of them aren't the same and you've got to be able to distinguish what is different from one area to another, but overall, you look out for the entire district and you have to look out for what's going on in our state as a county in the state of Nevada. So, I'd make sure that, because it's almost like when you go from a job as a firefighter or as a employee to a supervisor, you have to make some changes. And I know that that has to exist and I would, again, review what the roles and responsibilities are and make adjustments accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Thank you very much. David, Stanley?
Don't want to go ahead and get people confused. I'm activist through and through, but my background comes from one of a high level of education. So, come time to go ahead and deal with the aspects of protocol from a political aspect, that is certainly there, but make no mistake about it, what you're going to go ahead and get from me is what you've seen for 28 years in the seat. I've been a service, a service to the community in a number of different areas and I will continue to do that. I believe that's what the county commissioner's role is to do, is to serve the people. I've been serving the people for the 28 years. And the reason why I'm going to be running for this seat is because of the lack of service that's been happening out of that seat for the 14 years on the economic development front. Any blind man can look at District D and look around and see what's going on in compared to the rest of the districts. Those days will be over. I'm already working on projects, doing that, so whether I'm the county commissioner or not, I will be holding the seat accountable and not just this seat, all the seats in the county commission. People understand who Stanley Washington is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David and Stanley Washington. I appreciate it. So, now I'm going to ask a question to Councilman Barone. Why change jobs? Seems like you're a pretty popular guy there in North Las Vegas, doing a good job. Why change jobs?
Actually, that's a great question. I think I work with the best staff that we've assembled. You know, it took us a while to get the right people in, but we've assembled the very best team, I think, in the valley. If you noticed, like the emergency declarations that have been put out, who actually wrote it, was the city of North Las Vegas team? And the other city just whited it out. Maybe I shouldn't even say that, but that's true. We actually have the most nimble, probably the most out-of-the-box type of staff that we've assembled and I get to work with a great mayor and city council. And from top to bottom, we had to be extremely inventive. We had to be, we didn't have any resources to like throw money to get us out of the last economic implosion. We had to be smart, we had to be frugal, we had to work within our means, and we clawed our way out. Why would I change jobs? Real simple. I think Mr. Washington kind of alluded to it. A significant portion of District D includes Ward One in North Las Vegas and Ward Two. And quite frankly, when you look around, you see the needs that we have in Ward One, they're reflected through most of District D. We've made some great progress in the downtown area of North Las Vegas. When I came in, you couldn't even give land away, but now we've actually have, we've actually formed a new economic plan, attracting businesses, multinational businesses, some of the biggest ones, to North Las Vegas and to Ward One and getting these services with very little resources. I think I can do that for the rest of Clark County, District D.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Which panel member would like to go first?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jim. First of all, gentlemen, thank you very much for, excuse me, coming to the Veterans and Politics. And Mr. D. Washington, I'd like to thank you for your service as being a fireperson for 20, 30 years? 33 years. That's amazing. Thank you very much, sir. There's a number of questions we can probably ask you, you know, about the economy, about employment, Corona, but let's get something that's regarding the city of Las Vegas. There's a virus going on here in the city of Las Vegas right now, other than the coronavirus. It's been around us for about 30 years. Las Vegas Family Court, that has destroyed more families' children with the typical, atypical judges that we have. I'll just give you three examples. One judge, Judge Sandra Palmerance, she is a racist. It was a number of articles, two articles in the Review Journal. I went to, on behalf of a number of African-Americans that approached me, we went to the NACAP. They didn't help us, not at all. They wanted $100 from each litigant and there was 100 litigants that I've been working with. Second of all, Judge Hughes, she got reprimanded through, because of the president of Veterans and Politics, Steve Sanson. And Judge Harder, he shows up when he wants to show up. Here's the issue, sir. There are families being destroyed out there by family court judges that have absolutely no business being on, behind, on the bench. What would your recommendation be or suggestion if either one of you gentlemen were elected to a county commissioner? And as you gentlemen are aware, the county commission office is the most powerful political office in the state of Nevada. And you do have the jurisdiction, by the way. The Attorney General of Nevada, Aaron Ford, does not. The County Clerk Commission, Clark County Commission does. So, what would you do? And if you do get elected, can we get a commitment from you today that you'll do something about it? Mr. Barron, pardon me, Councilperson Barron, please start us off.
Quite frankly, I think that the issue with the local courts, especially the family courts, goes a lot deeper than just family court. A few years ago, I don't know if you, I'm sure Steve and maybe as you guys do know, there was a decision that came down from the Nevada State Court, which was the Sparks decision, which pretty much, it's as if the courts are supposed to be working fully independently from whatever jurisdiction that they're operating in. It's given them an untold amount of power. Matter of fact, in the city of North Las Vegas, we also were suffering from a really bad judge who had, remember, a constitutionally, the people of our country had the right to petition. And there was a constitutional, a totally valid recall effort that was successful, but when it was appealed all the way to the Supreme Court, they dithered for over a year and a half and they pretty much, you know, ruled, hey, well, judges cannot be recalled. That's a travesty. Why, now, had it gotten appealed by our city, you know, the people who appealed it, which by the by were a veterans group who was chiefly behind it, had it gotten appealed to the Supreme Court or at least to a district court, I think the First Amendment right to petition would have been upheld. The first things first, I'd like to see maybe a group put together to actually appeal decisions like this one, to actually make the courts in the state of Nevada to be accountable to the people, because right now, whether they are or not, it's highly debatable. Okay? As to what to do directly, well, the Nevada Supreme Court has decided that, you know, these guys are, all the courts are supposed to be acting independently, which I guess that is true, but remember, in the end, all the different jurisdictions do have a little bit of the power of the purse. And I think that's one thing that you can actively do to begin to make them a little bit more responsible.
Yeah, Councilor Barron, the specific question I asked you personally was that what would you do? You know, this is a typical political talk that people get. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Robert Medoff. I'm a retired criminal court psychologist. I was a consultant across North America for various attorneys for 30 years and I've been actively involved. I started the ice hockey program as a volunteer 29 years ago, which led to the NHL. I've been affiliated and associated with Mr. Steve Sanson on behalf of Veteran Politics for a number of years and assisting him whenever he requires my services. And the same question goes for you, Mr. Washington, about specifically about what your feelings are and if you were aware of it in family court.
I have heard some horror stories about the family court. You asked if I would commit to you guys to do something about that? Absolutely, I would. However, I would give this caveat, I would have to prioritize, because when you go into one of these offices, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of moving parts. So, I wouldn't sit here and be disingenuous and say, this will be the first thing I'll take on to seek your endorsement, to sit here and say, yes, so I won't do that. But certainly, I think it's very important and I have heard some horror stories. What I would simply think about doing, first of all, is there must be some kind of evaluation process for judges. If there isn't, you're laughing, so that tells me that there isn't. There should be, because to me, how are you going to let people go into these offices just ruin people's lives and there's no accountability? So, I would certainly be looking at a way of assessing or evaluating those judges, look at some of the various cases and maybe, as the councilman said, I agree, maybe there needs to be some sort of committee, because as a commissioner, you can't see everything and do everything, but certainly, I think it's worth listening to and doing something about. So, that would be my commitment to you all.
Thank you very much.
Sir?
The answer to your question is absolutely. I've heard the same horror stories that Dave has heard. Not going to be professed to you to know the inner workings of that, because that's not my lane there, but I would tell you that I would go ahead and do exactly what Mr. Hawkins did back when he was city councilman. He had a committee of subject matter experts. So, what I would basically have is my committee of subject matter experts and I'd have Steve Sanson or yourself representing the subject matter. I would have the other subject matters come together and I would go ahead and bring it to the rest of the county commissioners. From what I understand, we're responsible, right?
Yes, you are, sir.
I would go ahead and make sure my other six county commissioners are accountable for everything that's going, I would lean on them to lean to get it right.
You know, and basically, just a question for the Mr. Washingtons. With voter recognition, how do you separate yourselves with the same last name? Because, you know, there's been studies done, there's, I know at least a few politicians, judges that are running and they've changed their last name, you know, to either a maiden name or something, because it's, voter recognition is extremely important. So, the differential between, how would you change that?
Well, I would say that I'm proud of my name. I've had it for 69 years and I plan to keep it. And I can tell you, from our community's perspective, they know who I am. And I will tell you this, for me to distinguish, there's several things that I'll be doing. Again, getting out, talking to folks, coming, not afraid to go before folks, to tell them what I'm about and who I am. And one thing about me, I have been a nonpartisan elected, a voter, I should say, since 2012 April 30th. Why did you do that? I got disenchanted with some of the Republicans platforms as well as Democrats. And I'm not owned by any party. I am a man of the people. My reputation speaks for itself, so I would just continue to put my platform out and people are going to have to make that decision.
I agree with Chief Washington. His reputation speaks for itself. I told you where I met him, doing his community service work on the other side of the prison wall. So, there's not going to be a mistake in terms of who Chief Dave Washington is. I have the utmost respect for him, just like everybody else in District D. But on the other side, if you go ahead and ask anybody around town, Stan Washington is, there won't be no mistake and they won't confuse me with the chief. My work stands on its own and will continue to stand on its own, as I will continue to go ahead and bring resources into District D like never before.
Okay, so, I only have one question. And so, just so the viewers and listeners understand, all three of you gentlemen understand that, and I'm pretty sure Stanley probably remembers, that I live in this county commission district. And years ago, when Stanley and I first met, one of the things, we didn't necessarily see eye to eye on every political issue, but one thing we did see eye to eye on, and this is why I want everybody to chime in on this, is that the representation in that district, like, don't get me wrong, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Weekly. Whenever I contacted him at any time, he was always there for me, albeit only every four years, but when I needed him every four years, he'd be there for me. And also, living in Ward Five, same thing. So, what would you three do to address that, this specific commission district? Because one of the things that I've learned living in this district as long as I had, have, it's very much taken for granted. Some of it is because of its economic breakdown, some of it is because of its political breakdown. But county commissioners don't show up but every four years, city councilmen don't show up but every four years, or if we're going to hold a meet and greet or a fundraiser and assemble people as well. What commitment as a voter, that somebody that is going to cast a vote, not just on this panel, but at the polling booth, what kind of commitment could you guys give me that you're going to actually pay attention to me more than once every four years? I'll start with Mr. Stanley Washington, please, and then work this way.
Well, you'll know that, because you'll continue to see what you've basically seen since the 28 years I've been here. When I first arrived, how many of you remember Sly Coleman? The late Sly Coleman? Yeah, he was a master's degree veteran. He's the one who took me to West Care, took me to Veterans, not Veterans Village, but the homeless shelter and took me all around to all the veterans' facilities and made me a veterans' homeless advocate at that time. And then the courts, the law took him away. I'm the one who initiated the Veterans First Initiative. Go back and check the city councils, go back and check the records. You can just go back and check the records on my service. I don't need to sit here and talk about what's going on. I'm going to continue to do what I've been doing. I've been an advocate up and down the board in the Veterans Breakfast. I will bring that back. I'm the one who put together the Veterans Breakfast. Everybody's familiar with that, so I'm not going to run any signs out there. Don't need to run any signs, just can continue to do. Frank Hawkins and I are working on the Hewings property, 11 acres. That needs to be veterans' housing there, mixed income housing. That's going down. Hewings is sitting on top of that property doing nothing. That's ridiculous. The 86 acres is going up in North Las Vegas, the councilman is familiar with. We're getting busy. There's going to be a whole lot of action taking place at the county commission here, because District D is not going to be taken for granted anymore. It's going to be taking the lead, because I'm going to be holding everybody accountable, as I've always done, from the governor to the game commission, all the way down, not playing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stanley Washington. Mr. David Washington?
Sure, sir. To me, as a commissioner, you have a responsibility to be accountable and responsive to your constituents. Whether someone votes for me or not, you should listen to them. If there's something that, as a group, but you're talking about you as an individual, I would hear you out. I think we have a responsibility sometimes, and when you have tough people to deal with, a lot of times, people will run away. There's only one time in my whole career in the fire service where I didn't return a call from a gentleman, because I just couldn't, I had no answer for him. Everything I said, he just disagreed with. But generally, it's just part of my practice as a person, as a human being, to return a person's call, to interact with a person. You can't run from issues, you have to address them. Will I always have the right answer? Will I always do exactly like you say? Probably not, but I won't be afraid to address you, because that's the responsibility. You can't come and ask people to vote for you and then you won't return a call, because they didn't give you $100 or whatever the case may be. If you are a member of that community and you are, I'd address you. It's a responsibility and holds me accountable as a commissioner.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And now, Councilman Barone? Same question.
Yeah, actually, I'm not the kind of person that you only see over four years. Actually, my voters know who I am because of things that I've done. If you go right now, you can look up Contact NLV. This has been a fantastic project. If you drive around in the downtown area in North Las Vegas, you'll find very little graffiti, if all. Where did that come from? Well, from a town hall meeting in the neighborhood. Well, from a town hall meeting in the neighborhood, when I tried to find out, what was it, that the issues that my constitution was needed? And it wasn't crime, it wasn't traffic, they were tired of seeing graffiti. So without having to put any more kids of color into the justice system, without having to spend any more money, we developed a fantastic program called Contact NLV, that virtually eliminated graffiti down in downtown area. This mask that I brought in here, I brought this mask, and it was actually donated to me from a care center in North Las Vegas. It was donated to me because actually, I went out to the different care centers to find out, and hospitals, you know, I know they're on the front lines, but you know, there's over 5,000 care centers, rehab and, 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 by the way, many of them have veterans in them, that they have over 5,000 people in them, and they're totally underserved. I went out to the three in North Las Vegas, and found my hair almost caught on fire. And when I found out that two of them were totally out of safety equipment, the PPEs, and one of them was down to its last 20 masks. So jumped into action, and just yesterday, we delivered 5,000 masks. The reason why we're able to do that, putting my EOC, our emergency operations center, is because I'm not the kind of person that just lays back, and you only hear from every four years, whenever they need some sort of election. I do this darn thing all the time. And I've always been quite accessible and pretty responsible. So what will I do? Same kind of things. And county commission, the same things that I've been doing for seven years now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name's Gianno Amato. I lived here for the last 39 years. I'm a previous nightclub owner. Right now, I purchase vehicles and resell them. I've been involved with veterans in politics for approximately one year. So my question is going to be for Mr. Barron first, and I would like everybody to answer it. Now, Judge Harder in Department N previously gave a woman that admitted in open court that she makes $2,000 a month. He found her to be indigent, because he did not like the other litigant. So do you guys believe, and do you guys now think that it's fair that every criminal, in every criminal court, and in every family court, that anybody that makes $2,000 or less is found indigent and given a free attorney? You first, Mr. Barron.
By the way, I've actually, I've actually gone through the family court system, and I was lucky that I had a decent judge. But again, I'm very familiar with all the, with all the, with all these issues. Hey, if you're going to do something for one, you're going to have to do it for everybody. So if you're going to open the door and allow people to have representation, have to consider it indigent, then you're going to have to do it for everybody. They, no, yes, I do know there are limits to, to the socials, to how much we haven't budgeted for these kind of things. But if you're going to do one, if you're going to do something for one person, you have to do it for everybody.
And one thing, not to cut you off, but also, I would like to put it out there that the judicial discipline here in Nevada said it was okay for him to do it. And also, the chief judge, two times she had a chance to recuse the judge off of the case, which she didn't do. So basically, now, if they said that it's okay for one case, that means it should be okay for everybody else. But go ahead and finish with your answer.
Yeah, you're going to have, you know, if you're going to do for one, then it's, you know, we're supposed to have equal protection under the law, and quite frankly, we're going to have to do it for everybody. That way, there will be no chance for there to be disparities between people having representation and people not.
Okay, great. And is that a commitment from you, that you would base a law around this case here in Department N?
Again, yeah. I mean, it's, I totally believe in equal protection under the law. If you do for some, you have to do it for everybody.
Thank you.
I would echo those sentiments with the exception of, I don't know, I won't sit here and commit to you that I would make it a law. I would get some professional background to assist me in trying to come up with a decision, because I have absolutely no background in law. So you mentioned the review committee from the, I believe it's from the top legal folks. See, there must be some ways that you can deal with this thing, because I'd agree that it's unfair if you're going to, if you're going to sit there as a judge and make a difference between people based upon money. And when you're making a certain amount of money, is that the criteria? I don't know that to be the case. So I would definitely take a look at it and go from there, without actually making a commitment to say, yes, in fact, yes, that's what I would do. I'd have to review it.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Stanley.
Once again, staying in my lane, the whole family court situation has not been something that's been on my radar, but I know it has been on Mr. Sampson's radar, who I've been knowing and dearly with for 20 years. I would simply defer to him, his committee, whatever guys you guys are coming up with it, and then kick butt and make sure everybody follows through and get it done.
Thank you. Now, the next question is, how do you guys feel about criminal law reform? And do you guys think, you know, especially with this pandemic going on right now, there's a lot of people in prison, okay, for minor infractions, minor crimes. Do you guys think that we should keep them locked up behind the walls right now? Or do you think a lot of the minor issues, you know, a lot of the minor criminals should be released? Go ahead, Mr. Stanley.
Now you're in my lane. I have already have calls in to Mr. Murray, Mrs. Sicilak, and others, relative to what we need to be doing on the ex-felon front. I've recently formed a PAC, like I just said before, California Nevadans, Felon Issues 2020, that I'm going to be rolling out. It's just, a bank account just got opened up last week. We'll be addressing the registration of the 89,000 ex-felons, and we'll be picking up the issues that are important to us, which is the issues that you're talking about right now. Of course, it's ridiculous in terms of what's going on, but there's not enough being done about it. And that's one of the reasons why I'm stepping up the heat. I've given the politicians in this town a pass up to now. They're not going to get it. I'm 35 years out of California. California is the leader in reentry reform, criminal reform, and that's who I'm partnering with. Clark County will be partnering with Los Angeles County, where I'm 35 years out of there. This is going to be a regional solution as we come down. So I've already formulated the partnership between California, which there's eight million ex-felons there, who basically are being dealt with, 89,000 here. So I submit to you, we're going to be a formidable force, period. With plenty of resources.
Yes, I would agree with some type of reform, and particularly to the point of what's going on right now. I think there need to be some quick review and let some folks out of jail. There's no question about it throughout America, that blacks and browns and poor whites make up the prison system. And I can tell you that some of the folks that are in jail right now should be let out. Marijuana possession, give me a break. It's legal now. So we need someone to take a look at those things and address it.
Actually, this is one thing that I'm really proud of, as my tenure in the city of North Las Vegas. A few years ago, our city actually closed down our jail for budgetary reasons. But that actually was a fantastic opportunity, because now, we're going to reopen it. But to begin with, we're bringing it with an entirely different mentality. We're calling it, of course, our community justice facility. And to begin with, we actually hired a person with the idea of opening the business, our facility with reformative justice reform as its very base. Things that people may not understand, you know, like the idea of giving every inmate a tablet. I'll get into that later on, right? But it's at the very, it's at the very base, it's at the very core of reformative justice. And we're talking about going, being leaders in the state of Nevada when it comes to these kind of things. Having people be evaluated, especially because so many of our other people who get referred to our facility have drug and mental health issues, and have people be evaluated upon incarceration, to actually get them on the right path. But to answer your question, yeah, already, our police department, we're doing things that, you're only going to get hooked up right now, if there's something pretty serious, and it has to be violent. I would, and of course, when it comes to letting people out of jail, yeah, I think we should let people out. But we can't just go ahead and open the doors. We have to make sure that the public is protected, and the people that we are letting out are not the violent felons.
But then, then again, you just keep in mind that we only have days, and you know, the pandemic's taken over. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michael Yepko. I'm the first family member in my family to graduate from college, Bowling Green State University, with a double major in criminal justice and psychology. In 1986, I was a police officer in South Carolina, a little sheriff's department there in Richland County. 1991, or actually, 1990, I applied for a couple of federal agencies. I got hired by the FBI. And they sent me to Quantico, survived 16 weeks, and then my first office was Las Vegas from 1991 through 96. And then in 99, I started my own company, and I was a Nevada private investigator and a process server. And I sold my business in 2014, and I'm kind of retired, so to speak. I really did a lot of preparation for this, and I have a lot of disclaimers, as I've done earlier, so I'll say this. In case there's a fire, or you don't like what I'm asking, and you're offended, which doesn't seem like you gentlemen would be, the exits are right there and over there. Research I've done, and I talked about and thought about for the last probably week and a half, when I volunteered to help Steve and the other guys here today, is why would somebody want to be on the county commission? And don't give us the pat answers, the generalizations. I'm not saying we're doing that. I'm not trying to offend anybody or accuse anybody. But we have what's called crony capitalism in this country. Crony capitalism is big business in plain sight. Okay? So what goes on and what you say may not be what you do behind closed doors. And I'm not saying that money doesn't make the world go round. It does. But my question to all three of you, and I think I'll start with, and I'll use your first names. Okay, well, I'll let David go first, and then Stanley, and I'll let you come last, okay, Isaac? I'll use your first names with no disrespect, just because there's two Washingtons. But my question to you gentlemen is, how do you intend to avoid corruption? Kickbacks, bribes, sweetheart deals, grants, favors, or any perceived favor, or any perceived behavior that would be interpreted as ad such? David, I'll let you go first.
Sure. Excuse me. First of all, as I mentioned, I've been nonpartisan since 2012. As I saw the things that were going on, and I certainly agree, not only with you in terms of people being bought, if that's what you're implying, I think that they are. There are many of them, starting from federal right on down to the local level. How do you avoid that stuff? You meet with people in your office, you keep you some witnesses, and you don't take anything that don't belong to you. I have a great retirement, and I'm not bragging. I did 33 years with the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. My wife is also retired. We don't have to be trying to reach under the table to get anything. And I tell you guys, I look you all in the eyes, you got my commitment on it. If you hear about me taking some damn money, kick my ass, because we shouldn't be doing it. I'm here to serve you guys. That's my whole purpose in running for office. I don't have time to be sneaking around, trying to make some money for me and my family. We're doing just fine. But that's a great question. It's a tough question, but it's easy to answer. You don't get it, you put yourself in those positions. I've worked with a number of council people, state legislators, on their campaign committees, and some got caught, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't listen to the advice of people said, you don't meet with anyone, you don't take anything that don't belong to you. And guess what? They get indicted. Some were lucky that they didn't go to jail, some did go to jail. So to me, you just don't put yourself in that position.
Okay, thank you. Stanley?
You know, they say that Congress, American Congress, and state houses is the best money you can buy. And that holds true all the way down to the council levels, too. You have to go ahead and look at a person's record. What have they been doing? Like I said, 28 years of service, not a dime. Right now, I believe I'm the only candidate that's probably lived in the Catholic Charities Homes, houses. I'm the only candidate that's the ex-felon, and I'm the only one, the day that he got out of prison, the next day, took his last $250 and gave it to the NAACP, Reverend Scott, with Senator Neal witnessing. You can call Senator Neal right now and ask him. So the idea of me putting in service has nothing to do with what you're doing for me. God sent me here to help Mr. Hawkins to go ahead and deliver for the people, and that's what's going to basically be happening. As a matter of fact, I don't even know what the county commissioners make, 89,000, or whatever it is. I'm going to be donating mine back into it, because there's other things that are going on that are, that are way more important. And if anything, this organization right here will be one of the ones that I'll basically be doing it. Why I'm running, I'm running, I really don't want to be the county commissioner. But we haven't had any effective representation in that seat since, in 14 years. Actually, we haven't had any leadership in this town since Frank Hawkins. So I have no choice but to go ahead and run for that seat, to make sure that we now have the type of representation that we really need coming forward. We're 14 years behind. Taking nothing away from Mr. Weekly, he was the youth champion, and that's where I met Dave, dealing with the youth. But he was a nightmare for jobs for parents. And I'm going to call it like it is, all the way down the line, from here to November. Folks aren't going to like it. You think they don't like what I'm here? Wait till I get finished. The whole county commission, whole new day, whole new normal coming down.
Okay, thank you. Isaac?
Yeah, the good thing is, I already have several years of reporting as I have to do, which is a good thing. And gosh, you know, I think if you look into a lot of people's finance reports, their expenditures, and where things go, you know, some of them, I think, have been seen to have questions, you know, surrounding those. Now, as for myself, like Chief Washington, I've been a teacher for 25 years. I could take the job of county commission, or as a councilman, I could take it or leave it. Why am I doing it? Very simple. There needs to be a partnership. What's happened classically is the commission acts as a commission, and it acts as a municipality, kind of like whenever it suits itself. The city of Las, the city of Las Vegas and the city of North Las Vegas, we haven't always been working together on things. And it's been to the detriment of the county, county commission. For I to tell you that there was a business that you guys probably know very well, who wanted to bring a factory, a factory that employs over 1,200 people in good-paying jobs, and could have brought it to District D. But one, but one local leader canned the whole idea, because he said he didn't want to look outside of his house here and see a factory. Right now, those jobs, huh, I'll tell you what, and they were non-gaming jobs. Right now, those jobs would be pretty darn important, to actually be able to work and live, and, you know, and also offer housing for veterans and other people who are looking for a transition. And they've been brought to this person time and again, and they bring it off. I'm running for this position. Why? I think I can bring together the leaders from Las Vegas, Clark County, and North Las Vegas, to provide a lot better than, a lot better, a lot better future for District D.
Okay, my final comment, just to all three of you, is the great Martin Luther King said this, "Don't judge a man by the color of his skin, but by the content of his character." So what you say here today, to me, is just scratching the surface, not that you haven't been specific. What I'm looking at is, what are you going to do when you're at that seat of power, and you have somebody come in, you know, and make an offer? You know, are you strong enough to avoid it? I'm not a fool. I know money makes the world go round. But you know, if you're talking about public service, it's a facade, just like public safety. There is no safety. There's only opportunity. That was said by the great General Douglas MacArthur. So I'm trying to be a little philosophical, which unfortunately, I have a bad habit of doing, but I also look at the bigger picture. Okay, if you're really going to sincerely put yourself out there, then a part of you is going to die, because you have to give of yourself. But we have a lot of takers, and I'm looking for givers. So I certainly hope that how you answered my question, whatever your deals, your agreements, your compensation, whatever it may be, I certainly hope that you know, as you mentioned, David, that you're making sure that you don't know that somebody's not watching, somebody's not listening. Because, you know, if we give you our endorsement and something goes wrong, it's an embarrassment on not only you, but on everyone. So I certainly hope that you are candid with me today. Thank you.
Okay, so just, so you gentlemen know, I've been giving you guys two minutes, because our next interview is due at two. However, it is, it's only one individual, so we're going to, if you guys will bear with us, we'd like to run a little bit over, if that's okay with you, because panel members still have some more questions. But what I would ask you guys to do is, I'm going to go ahead and limit those responses to 45 seconds. I know that's tough to do, but if you'd bear with us, I'd appreciate that. Next question, we'll go to Dr. Madoff.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you very much, Jim. First of all, I have a yes or no question right now. Are you gentlemen familiar with the Las Vegas Police Foundation and Las Vegas Judicial Foundation, Mr. Washington?
No. I believe I've heard of Police Foundation, Judicial Foundation, no.
You, sir? You, sir?
Not heard of it, but I don't know much about it.
Okay. You don't know much about it. Anyway, what if I were to tell you that the chairperson of the Las Vegas Police Foundation and Las, pardon me, of the Las Vegas Police Foundation is a two-time loser and a domestic abuser? What if I tell you that he's got two temporary protection orders against him? One from a woman in Seattle, Washington, and one locally here. Now, we've made some contacts to the other board members of both foundations. They surrounded the wagons, and they're protecting him. Now, to me, I just can't believe this. This is the Las Vegas Police Foundation and the Las Vegas Judicial Foundation, and they're protecting a known domestic abuser? Give me a break. And the newspapers are also covering up. This goes all the way up to the top. This gentleman, his name is Jordan Wurst, he's a very wealthy real estate developer. He's cut in different politicians, and obviously people on the board to his deals. And he's still a sitting member right now. He is the board of direct, he is the chairperson of this Las Vegas Police Foundation. And as Jim said, you gentlemen have amenities, each councilman. What would you do if you were the county commissioner? This is right up your wheelhouse.
Well, to begin with, what kind of an organization is it? Is this a nonprofit?
Yes, a nonprofit organization. The Police Foundation donates to various charities here, and, yeah, the Las Vegas Police Foundation, it's a very well-known organization in Las Vegas.
Well, one thing I would do was, if now that I found something like that out, the first thing I'd do is not have any contact with this organization. Oftentimes, the very strongest thing that you can say is to actually not have any contact or anything to do with, if I'm invited to any of their functions, I could very publicly and respectfully decline to go, so long as they have a person like that on their board. I mean, to begin regulating organizations, I don't think that's actually a function, unless there is some sort of a current law there, which I don't think that there is, you know?
Right.
You know, I mean, they do have this organization, and I sit on a couple of foundations myself. I don't think that, again, as Mr. Washington always says, we should stay within our length. But definitely, the first thing that I would do is to stay away from that organization, and so long as they have that kind of leadership, definitely make a strong stand against that. If someone later on proposes something, we'd definitely have to look at that.
Thank you very much. Also, there's 42 court documents of this. We have the exhibits of his charges and convictions, and it was sent to each one of the board members of the Police Foundation and the Judicial Foundation. And because he, I think both of you gentlemen have stated that the, you will not accept any financial assistance, all three of you, this gentleman has been donating and having the people sit, judges, politicians, police officers involved in his real estate deals. And that's why they surrounded the wagons. Mr. Washington, David?
Yes, if I could go back, I don't know if I completed to answer your question, but I'm running because people have encouraged me. I feel like a draft choice. That's why I'm running. It's not something I just up and decided to do. People have been encouraging me since I retired 12 years ago. To your question, first thing I would do is, I'd ask you guys to make sure, if I'm elected, to make sure I get this man's name, or in fact, even before, because I don't want his money. Because obviously, something is going on, and I'd be looking at, who has this guy been donating money to? I don't want to be in anybody's hip pocket. And all the accountings that you have of him, would I probably have to talk with legal because, and then check with my own personal attorney, because he needs to be fired up. I mean, he needs to be, and you say he's already been exposed, but obviously, nobody, he's, it's seemingly untouchable. But I think he needs to go down. And I think he, a person with that kind of behavior and background, they have no role to me. Maybe he can chair this group, because we can't stop people from being a member of various organizations, but certainly, he is not one that I would want to do anything with as a councilman, as I said. I wouldn't participate with him, no form, no fashion.
Thank you very much.
And I would encourage the folks from Metro, what are you guys doing here? It makes you look bad.
Obviously not.
Right.
Sir?
My specialty in this town is speaking truth to power. When I first came here, started with Mr. Win, then moved to Mr. Terry, late Mr. Terry Lani, on over to Mr. Mike Enson, all the way down to the late Arthur Goldberg, you name it, all the way down. So, Governor Miller, all the way down. So whoever this gentleman is, that's all I need to know is his name, what have you, and then I will go ahead and begin to go ahead and surround the wagon by the people who he's supporting, ask them accountable. Why are you dealing with this individual right here? Are you in Coolton? And then they will have to back away, and that's how you go ahead and get to him, in terms of what's going on. There's several ways to go ahead and skin a cat in terms of what's going on, and my specialty is holding the big dogs accountable.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Those were excellent answers. Thank you.
Okay, so my next question is for you, Mr. Barron. I want to know if you had anything to do with the vote that holds, that basically if homeless get caught on the streets, they get arrested for sleeping in the streets?
Actually, that's a city of Las Vegas thing that happened. I had nothing to do with that one. I'm actually very, very, I'm actually very sensitive to this, right? I believe that the city of Las Vegas did this to go ahead and push people out of the municipality of Las Vegas and back into North Las Vegas and West Las Vegas, like they did 30 years ago, okay? You're talking to someone, I've lived in North Las Vegas all my life, and when they pushed people way back in the olden days of John 3:16 Cook, when they shut them down there in downtown Las Vegas, and they pushed everybody there at the Old Vegas Village, which is now the site of where Catholic Charities is, right? I always thought that it was a really mean-spirited and very short-sighted thing to do, when really, we should be getting together and finding real solutions. There actually have been lots of great solutions that have been proposed, but you can't get any commitment from the county, along with working with Las Vegas, to make these things happen. So no, I didn't have anything to do with that. And actually, if there's one municipality that's actually now having to deal with this, it's the city of North Las Vegas.
Okay, great. And then, David, a few questions. Well, I just got one question for the both of you guys. Do you guys think it's fair that the police are now required to arrest the homeless? And if not, what do you plan on doing about it?
That is something that I believe was a misstep. When it first happened, I'm like, why are we doing it? They gave an explanation, but I didn't appreciate it, because I think that when people are homeless, there's a lot of different factors that go into why they're homeless. And particularly, as you guys, as a veterans group, we know we got a lot of veterans that suffer from all sorts of things, and that's why they're on the streets. But I think that there's ways to deal with people, to include actually trying to work with people, put teams of people out there to go, which they done after the fact. I think that should have been, personally, I think it should have been done in front, where you put teams of people to go out there and talk to these homeless folks and try to get them help. The law was passed, the ordinance was passed, and then they put these teams to go out. I think it should have been done the other way around, personally.
Of course not. That isn't the move that should have been moved. That was the panic move, because they have no plan and no vision. What's really missing, let's face it, I've been a homeless advocate, veterans advocate from day one, as I told you, under the late Sly Coleman there. What's really missing is hundreds of millions of dollars of resources coming into District D to address the issues. Let's face it, okay? And if Councilman Commissioner Weekly had been halfway on this, we would be halfway not on this. It hasn't happened. And that's my biggest thing. Like I said, I'm not coming to you as a politician, I'm not coming to you as a health expert, I'm coming to you as an activist who's got a background in economic development, and that's what's going to be happening in Commission D, whether I'm the commissioner or not. Like I said, I'm gonna be holding everybody accountable for what's going on. I'm not giving anybody a pass anymore. And I don't have to worry about giving Mr. Washington a pass, because if he's basically there, I know we're on the same page, because we come from the same people. Mr. Barone, he's my, the only one in the North Las Vegas City Council who I actually have a respect for on that. And that's including the one of color up there. So, anyway, bottom line, there's gonna be a change in what's going on here, period.
Okay, just to follow up real quick, David, with your comment, two things that I've learned in my experience in my career is, you never have enough time, you can never have enough money.
Sure.
Okay? So, I've also seen, in my older days now, being whopping 56, is that not only do the poor, whether deservedly so or not, have a sense of entitlement, so do the rich. So I'm not against people making money, but I want to know how it's going to be done, and how transparent, and what are the checks and balances going to be in the system? You know, we, in the past, we had many examples. We had Don Charlie Boy, the constable's office. I ran for constable, by the way, and I lost. But I got to learn quite a bit. I also ran against Bobby G., who never got his hand in the cookie jar. We saw what happened to Earl Mitchell, the constable. And then we saw the biggest joke of the world was John Bonaventure. Now, I know it's all the constable, but there's other examples of morons who somehow managed to get in office. So my final question, and I'm trying to go as fast as I can, Jim, is, to each gentleman you can answer, and I'll start with you, Isaac, is, what is the most important, in your opinion, issue for your district, and what do you plan to do about it? Just one issue. Be brief, please. Isaac?
Number one, poverty. A lack of resource, a lack of financial resources. I don't think, you know, it's a secret here. One thing that I've done is, I started the North Las Vegas Small Business Academy. You know, one thing that's really pervasive in North Las Vegas, the number one open-air market is Broad Acres SWAT. I mean, so we have literally thousands of people, who if they just had a little bit of encouragement, and just a little bit of resource, can make that step, and take their small, their micro-business, and make it into a small business. And that's, well, of course, where larger businesses, and that's where, you know, money comes into the district. So one thing that's been for me is developing and supporting businesses, especially businesses of color. And so to that wit, I started the North Las Vegas Small Business Academy, and we already have lots of people who have gone through that, and have started their businesses, of course, right now, at a very difficult time. But, yeah, you have to grow from the bottom.
Okay, well, once we come out of the COVID pandemic, things are going to happen. I'd like to go to Stanley next, please, if you'd answer.
How many of you gentlemen are familiar with Opportunity Zone? Opportunity Zone. I encourage you to go ahead and Google it as soon as your interview process is over for the day. Bottom line is, and I believe Mr. Barone is familiar with it, is there, I was the gentleman who basically introduced that to Las Vegas outside, from a public standpoint. The governor and a few other folks knew about it, because they were basically the ones responsible for putting it in play, but the public did not know about it until I basically brought that to town in a workshop, basically, before, and have been informing everybody since then, from Cedric Carrer and everybody else. Bottom line is this, it's basically an incentive played to the rich to invest in the poor communities and not have to pay taxes on the profits of that investment for 10 years, making it highly attractive for them to shift resources into the poor communities, but with the caveat that it's supposed to be shared prosperity. Not they come in, gentrification out, run out, shared prosperity. So that means the deal cut has to be, we use your capital to build up our community to look like Summerlin, and in 10 years, we have an exit deal where you take your capital out, make your money, we go on for the next 100 years with our community looking like Summerlin the rest of it.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what I'm working on now, bringing hundreds of millions of dollars into District D, and I have all the documentation to back it up.
Excellent program. Okay, thank you, Stanley. David, your last?
One of the top programs for me is redevelopment, and I know the county just started a redevelopment department. And in fact, I've already met with that individual. I think it's important, because when you talk about redevelopment and development, as I mentioned earlier, there's various pockets throughout District D that are unincorporated areas that there can be some development to take place in those areas. And that's something that we need to be about. And as we know, or I trust that you guys have studied this as well, in the black community in particular, they have been left by the wayside in many, many different ways. There's many major corporations that have come in. What about the low-level nonprofit, not nonprofit, excuse me, mom-and-pop-type stores? That's why we need a revolving loan fund to assist those folks. And I have that kind of background as chairman of New Ventures Capital Development Corporation. And then I would be, Public Safety would be running right close for police and fire and other public safety-type programs.
Okay, thank you very much. So what we're gonna do at this time is, we'll go ahead and give each one of you your two minutes to give your final wrap-up, why the voter should come out and vote for you. Please give all your contact information. I don't have another specific question, but I do actually want to make a statement to all three of you gentlemen. As long as I've been doing endorsement panel interviews and things of that nature, I get kind of discouraged when, this is like a backhanded compliment, so don't, relax. I get discouraged when I, when we interview, we have certain panels, and I look across those candidates, and I'm like, man, if we could spread these people out and run them in different areas. Just as a side note, like I said, I hadn't met Chief Washington prior to this, but I've met Stanley, now I remember Stanley, it was Ricardo six years ago. That's where we first met. That was when I was running for, I ran for the state assembly. So that's when I first met Stanley, and we talked about issues in Ward 5. And then, also, I know Councilman Barone, he's been on the show before. All three of you guys, honestly, like, you guys are kind of heroes to me, because it's one of those things where a lot of people say that they're active in the community, they want to do good things, but they don't take the time to do it, they don't take the investment, they don't spend the time to do the research, the knowledge, to hold the people accountable, speak truth to power. So I just, as a side note, I just want to say that we are, that I am personally lucky to have been able to spend an hour or so of my time with you three gentlemen. With that, Councilman Barone, if you would like to start your two-minute conclusion, please?
Yeah, thank you very much. Talk about accountability. Well, you know, I'm not, I myself, I'm not a perfect person. I'm just a perfect person for District D. I still live in the same house that I bought when I was 22 years old, even though, if you see me limp, of course, I'm a person who, I have my own physical limitations, but that's never, nothing has ever stopped me from actually accomplishing everything that I've set out to do. I'll be, of the people who are already elected, you know, so I'm excluding the two gentlemen Washingtons here. I'm the only one who, time and time again, has come up with real programs, with real solutions to real problems in government. And I think that's been borne out by the way that the city of North Las Vegas has rebounded from the brink of financial collapse, okay? As for, as for why am I doing this, and why I should be doing that, hey, you'll have to, excuse me, I am a registered Democrat, so I have to get through a primary here in just in a couple of months, but I'm not, I'm still kind of an outsider. I am not the party guy. I'm not the party guy, I'm not the person who's been in office for over two decades and has not gotten things done. I'm the guy who, in a short seven years, has led the city of North Las Vegas, and especially the downtown area, back from the, back from financial collapse, and brought it back towards a bright future. And I've done it in increasing public amenities, public parks, without having to raise any taxes, because we didn't have any taxes to raise, quite frankly, bringing back public services, and maintain public safety without raising taxes. So if there's anybody who's seen that can get it done, and can serve the people, whether it's getting masks for these public health institutions that are overlooked, or bringing back jobs and services right, I think it's me. And so I'd appreciate people to support me in, first, in the primary, and then in the general election. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Chief Washington, if you'd like to go next, please.
Yes, sir. I am running once again, because people have encouraged me to, because they know that, from my activism, and I know that you got to separate from the question that was asked, you're being an activist and one to be, that actually sets laws for the community. I understand that that separation has to occur. I can tell you that I got experience as a fire chief and just government employee, and I've also been a businessman as a chairman of the board. And I've also been a businessman as a chairman of the board of New Ventures Capital Development Company. And as I mentioned, we had a portfolio of millions of dollars. And I believe it's important for a person to come in, to have some kind of background, both in government as well as in private industry. And with Steve, for example, I've seen Steve many times down at city council raising hell. And sometimes, that's what you got to do. And one thing about me, I never run from people. And people have a right with respect, because I've never been put out, and I've raised a lot of hell in my life, I've never been put out of a meeting because I didn't know how to go in there and be respectful of people and the positions and the things that they have to do as quote-unquote elected officials. You guys have my commitment, and I would love to have your endorsement. That's why I came. Because I, you know, several groups, just like the rest of these gentlemen I trust, have been getting information to come. I'm not going to talk to every group because I don't want every group's endorsement. I really don't. Because some of them, what they stand for, I am not for. So I'm not going to go in there and perpetrate just to try to get your endorsement. I am a veteran. I appreciate the work that the veterans have done in this country. And again, I'm a member of American Legion Post 10, did not go to war. But I did serve this country, and I'm ready to serve the people because I'm about the people. I have no party affiliation, and I've been that way, not starting yesterday, but since 2012. And I thank you for this opportunity to be before you this afternoon.
Mr. Washington?
Thank you.
Last, but definitely not least?
Well, what's going to happen is that I'm going to raise the standard all the way across the board, from the governor's office on down. I don't need to be the county commissioner for District D to do God's work and lead this community. And that's what I've been doing, and now I'm getting it doubled down. So whoever the county commissioner is for District D, they're going to have a high standard to go ahead and hold. Because I basically understand how the system works. You're the public official, but you serve at the pleasure of the people. So that means that whoever the county commissioner of District D is, I will be their boss, okay? And we'll act like that. I just gave Commissioner Weekly a pass, okay? But other than that, there'll be no more passes. Not for District D, A, B, or any other of the districts in terms of, we're going to turn things around here. And as far as the priority, the homeless veterans, absolutely, in terms of what's going on. I have a plan to go ahead and bring in hundreds of millions of dollars. Frank Hawkins and I are working on putting stuff in play. We're not just talking about what we're going to do, we're already in motion. Don't need to be the county commissioner for District D to do that. Don't need to go ahead and cook back up with Steve Sanson, the work that he's been doing for 20 years that we've been working together. And the reason why you guys know me a little bit more so than these other gentlemen is because of my work, and that will continue to be the case. So you don't have to worry about it. And whether it's Mr. Washington or this gentleman right here, I would serve them as I would serve anybody because we're going to all be in this thing together. And I know that Dave and I already have similar thoughts. We come out of the same ilk, Earnest Fountain, New Venture Capital is your right. And so I couldn't think of any better people to go in and be in the seat. And really, like I said, I just need to have accountability to be there because we haven't had it in 14 years. I really don't need to be there. I really want to go ahead and make sure whoever's there agrees to a committee of subject matter experts that they will go in and bring in, allow them to go ahead and move things forward to the community to rally around. That's how it gets done because you cannot do it by yourself. And I have a whole bunch of support out there, whether it's the homeless veterans, the ex-offenders, the underbanked, or you name it because of 28 years of the service.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank all three of you gentlemen. Running for office is not easy. Sitting in front of us four knuckleheads answering our questions isn't exactly easy either. And spending a Saturday afternoon when you could probably be doing other things would be easy too. But you guys came in, and I appreciate that very much. Best of luck to all three of you. That now concludes our panel interview for Clark County Commission District D.